I'm being five o'clock, I will call the July fifteenth meeting of the border, pre-town border selectmen to order. Um, is there anyone recording the meeting?
Free town.
Okay, thank you. Alright, to begin with, um, the public discussion, like I said, um, the last meeting, I wanna bring to the end of the meeting, that way if someone is coming in late, they have the opportunity, uh, to speak. So that being said, we'll go on to, um, actually, item number two, because the item number one has, uh, run into some complications, so we'll be doing that at a later date. So item number two, memorandum of understanding from agreement between, uh, the Public Employee Union, Local eleven forty-four, Luna Clerical and Library Bargaining Unit, um, and you should have a copy of that, uh, with you. Okay, so I will open that up to discussion or motion.
To move this along, I'll just, um, make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, is there any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All opposed?
Nay.
Uh, the ayes have it, uh, the memorandum is approved. Um, second item is the, uh, issue with, uh, ch- the chapter, uh, sixty-one A property on Dr. Burley Road, been before the board before, it's, um, to waive our, uh, interest in, uh, purchasing the land. The other committees involved have waived it, their right, uh, I'll accept a motion on the matter.
Motion approved.
Motion made is second.
Second, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye.
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 Item number four, Go Gold, I won't read the whole letter, but, um, we have the, let's see, the, the request for the, um, childhood cancer awareness month of September, um, and the, the matter is the Go Gold and it's to allow for the Go Gold group to place ribbons, um, on town property for the last, um, weekend of August through the month of September. It's a, uh, sign.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
Right here, second, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, item number five is the discussion on schedule for, uh, fees in the building department. Jeff, do you wanna come over here and settle, sit over here? And, uh, both to Jeff and Derek, uh, just for your information, um, today I had discussions with two different people, one about, uh, your work Derek and one about your work Jeff, and both of the discussions were very positive. Yeah, got a good review, but I just wanted to give you that, I, you know, you're, you're being appreciated. As, we have, Jeff is before us, he was asked to, uh, look over, um, the fee schedule that we have presently and to see what changes, uh, he would recommend. So those changes are before you, on two pages, one's residential and one's commercial. Um, my question would be, as we discuss these things, would it be in order, if most of the, uh, fees have not changed, if any, I would ask, does anyone have a, uh, issue or question about any of the fees that are listed as same, which would be that they're not being, uh, requested to be increased?
No, it's fine with me.
Alright, with that being said, um, we'll go, does anyone have any, uh, issues or, well, what I'll do is, I will, uh, read the ones that have a change and we'll discuss them as they go along. The first is, uh, the fee for new construction, it would go from thirty-five cents per square feet to forty cents per square feet. Is there any discussion on that? Alright, uh, the next would be for, uh, okay, the fee for additions, similar to the first, it would be, um, thirty-five cents per square foot with a minimum of one hundred, i- uh, is the issue now, that would be raised to forty cents per square foot, so no minimum, you know, five cent increase. Any discussion on that? Okay, the same generally with, uh, garages and carports fr- from, uh, twenty-five cents a square foot to thirty cents a square foot, any discussion? Okay, um, renovations would go from fifty dollars a room, correct, Jeff?
Uh, correct.
Okay, to forty cents per square foot with a minimum of fifty dollars for the fee. Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, um, the next is accessory apartments, um, we formally did not have a fee, uh, now it's going to forty cents per square foot. Any discussion on that? Okay, accessory, uh, structure, uh, we had, previously did not have a fee schedule for that, the fee schedule would be thirty cents a square foot, any discussion on that?
Just exactly what it's an accessory structure.
Isn't it like an outbuilding that, um?
Shed?
Yeah, no, a shed is anything under two hundred square feet. Anything over two hundred square feet would be accessory to the primary structure. Like a resident, if they build a gr- um, a, like a barn, that would be an accessory structure.
Okay.
Um, technically they, a garage would fall under that, but, um, we're looking more like barns and, and things like that. The reason why I went to thirty was because, um, to build, to construct an addition or that's at forty, accessory is not habitable.
Okay.
Alright, the next one is fence over seven feet, is that seven feet in length, Jeff?
Yes, correct.
Alright, and the fee would go from twenty-five to thirty-five, is there any discussion on that?
Per foot?
Uh, no, uh, what, what that is, is, um, it would be a set fee, someone comes in and, because they have to pull a permit for a fence, uh, it's a set fee of, of thirty-five dollars, which really covers a one-time inspection for that. Right now we have it at twenty-five cents, and that doesn't cover the fee, a fee for an inspector to go out.
You, you don't mean twenty-five cents, you mean twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And I think the other ones, I, I did put the period before the.
Okay, next item is, uh, sheet metal, um, that would be fifty dollars, going up from, uh, zero to fifty dollars.
Well, we have a fee, but, um, it was kind of a handwritten one in, I didn't know if that was, so, yeah.
Okay, alright, that's good. Well, ju- just for, uh, argument sake, what was, do you remember what the fee was?
I, I, I think it was fifty, you know, a hundred percent, um, yeah, I, I, that probably stayed the same, but it was penciled in, it wasn't on a set paper that we had.
Is that a sheet metal building?
No, sheet metal for duck work and we think that for a house, it's the only one to put that into a house.
Oh, okay.
Just be a set fee of fifty dollars.
Okay, next one, item is, uh, retaining wall from zero to fifty dollars. Any issue, any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, uh, next is solar, uh, arrays, I believe, correct? Uh, and that would, fee would be forty cents per kilowatt, going up from zero.
Well, that, that one again is, that's what we have been charging, and I felt that, you know, that should stay the same, but we gotta, I gotta put a list, so we can type it out, so it's there. Um, they didn't have that one in it as well, um, some of the things were penciled in, so, but that's what we've been.
How many kilowatts in a typical installation today?
Let's say roughly a thirty panel is, is about twelve kilowatts.
Twelve kilowatts?
Yeah.
So we're talking like five bucks?
Well, there's a minimum, any, any of these permits would be a minimum of, except for the fence, would be a minimum of fifty dollars.
Okay.
Alright, um, and the next one would be basements, um, going from probably the base, base fee of fifty dollars, is that really what it is, Jeff?
Uh, it would go to forty cents per square foot.
Right, okay, right, okay.
To finish off a basement.
And then, uh, signs, you ha- have it going down from seventy-five to fifty, but you have a star next to it, what's the star?
Yeah, that one, um, I pretty much looked at ours and compared them to all the other towns, and the next highest would be fifty, um, you know, I do kinda try to fit in with other towns as well, without hurting us as much, the signs, at this point this year, or since I've been here, I've only done, uh, three of them, two or three of them, so, you know, to kinda help the, the customers, that's why, that's why I chose that.
My only question is, where's the asterisk next to it, Jeff?
That's, you know, for me to talk about it, yeah.
Okay, alright, alright.
But, let me just ask you, this, this is residential, what kind of residential signs are we talking about?
They would put for home occupation, and a lot of times they will put a, there's a square footage usually, it's a one square foot sign that they could put out, um, at the end of their driveway or, um, saying that, you know, whatever the, the practice that they have, um, not for, that's the best way to, um.
Like a doctor's office?
Like a home occupation.
A home occupation, you know, that might be, you know, with their number on it for, like a seamstress, you know, where, yeah, they might, you know.
That's not considered a motion.
It's kinda like a little advertisement without putting a lawn sign.
Alright, uh, I'll turn to the page on commercial, um, and the rates, again, does anyone have any issue with anything that's the same?
No.
No, okay, alright, uh, temporary tent is the first one, we're going up from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. Any issues with that? Alright, the next is, uh, occupancy permit going from fifty to a hundred dollars. Uh, fence from, uh, twenty-five to fifty dollars. Again, the asterisk.
With the asterisk, that, again, that would be the fence, um, for the inspection, but because of commercial, it's a, uh, commercial is usually a double than a residential, but, um, yes, I did double it, but going with other, other towns, after talking to them, they, they kinda have their minimum fees, uh, they went with a minimum fee with a lot of it, and fifty dollars is our minimum fee.
Okay, alright, fine. Uh, next item is, uh, roofing, we're going from, uh, fifty cent, pardon me, forty cents per square, uh, feet, plus with a minimum of five hundred, uh, to two hundred. Um, Jeff and I have spoken about this before, um, alright, the, these, fees dropping are more in line with really what needs to be done, I think. Um, siding, uh, once again, forty, uh, cents a square foot, uh, five hundred minimum, we're going down to two hundred. And the same with, uh, windows and doors on, uh, commercial buildings, George, do you have a?
Uh, no, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, um, the next one is change of use from, you have here basically not applicable.
Yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have anything down on that.
Okay. Uh, same way with fire alarm, uh, from, except, it's gotta be a fifty dollar. Uh, foundation is one hundred, you have a little odd there, Jeff, what's that little one hundred?
Uh, the R, to tell you the truth, um, I don't know what that R is.
Okay, you're probably a good at typing.
But, we had a hundred dollar, yeah, it could've been typo. We, we've had a hundred dollars, but comparing it with other towns, I mean, they're at the two hundred, um, which, again, for the, I believe the residential, um, for foundations, our foundations, only we have it at hundred and twelve.
Alright.
While we have it as a hundred and, and looking at other towns, they, it's usually a double, they double the price of a residential for a commercial.
Okay.
Um, that's why I went to the two hundred dollars. And it did match some of the other, other towns around.
Alright, uh, generator, again, it's fifty, we're, we're going to, uh, charge a fifty dollar fee before it was not applicable. And the last one is sprinkler system, uh, from not applicable to, uh, seventy-five, uh, dollars. So, with that being the rundown, uh, is there any?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, there you go, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty painless. Alright, thanks for your time, thanks, thanks for your effort, Jeff, in doing that. Derek, now, your chair. Uh, alright, once again, I'm just gonna go, unless someone has a question about the present, um, fees that are not being changed, I'll go to the fee changes. Uh, Derek, do you know when the last time the fees were changed?
Um, exactly, no, I know it's been a while.
I think it was two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten.
Are you on the transfer station or the whole?
Um, well, let's go.
We have.
Transfer, I think transfer station is, is on the top.
Okay.
On, uh, uh.
No, I have it back at the end.
You have, on the other way.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, if I'm wrong, then I'll go the other way.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, transfer station is on top.
Okay, alright, um, so the first change would be the fee for the sticker going from fifteen to thirty, and if, the idea is it's been nine years, uh, we're starting to catch up, I guess. Um, so, any issue with that? Okay, the next one is one day pass, uh, which would be given for fifteen dollars, which would be a new, um, charge. Any question on that? Alright, the next one is, uh, truck tires, and five is the to- is, I would say, is that, is that the minimum that, what, pardon me, the maximum that you can bring in?
No, uh, right now it's depending on the size of the tire, we either charge three or ten.
Okay.
I, I'm proposing to go from three to ten to five to fifteen.
So the size.
It's the size of the tire.
Okay, alright, fine. Uh, mattress from fifteen to twenty, uh, any issue with that?
I do.
Okay.
That's the only thing, 'cause other places are charging anywhere from, I don't need to be on camera, um, thirty-five to forty-five dollars.
Uh-huh.
And sometimes our haulers charge us triple that to take them out, then it becomes an expense to us. I have kinda like a little cemetery going on with mattresses and box springs, so.
Okay.
So you, you'd like to see it raised, is that?
Excuse me?
You'd wanna raise this price?
I would think a little bit more, because late bills charging thirty-five and they're paying it.
Well, people pay, have to pay it, I guess, but, but it, it does cost more to get rid of it.
It does cost more, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, shouldn't we be charging what it's costing us?
Well, well, the, no one will pay it.
I'd have to take karate.
Right.
Yeah, no, no one would pay what it char- what it costs us to.
I think there's a, there's a fine line between having people want to pay and to drop it off or to find them on the roadside somewhere. So we wanna entice them to use the transfer station without killing them in the long run, otherwise we're gonna see the side roads, um, have a bunch of stuff all the time.
I think we'll need more people.
And I'm not opposed to go, the mattress and box spring are basically one and the same. I'm not opposed from that number going up from twenty, but to Lisa's point, if you go up too much, then you will find them on the side of the road, because they're not gonna pay the money to get rid of them.
So why don't we do, if the board would, um, why don't we do twenty this year to see how it works out, and then do twenty-five next year? So then that way we're increasing it this year, and then we already know that we're gonna increase it for next year.
Okay, um.
Okay, make a motion to accept that.
Alright, uh, just hold on.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, Derek, do we have, I, in the past we've had grants, correct?
We're, we're not under a grant right now, um, I can get rid of mattresses with, through the state bid list, but we're not under a mattress grant right now.
Alright, do you know of any, uh, likelihood of there being a grant program in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, there'll be something that we can get on board with.
Okay, alright, so I just wanna, I thought that might be, and that might, there's an element.
And as criteria, you have to fit with that mattress program, like they have to almost be like clean, no rips, no soil, not wet, so that's where the rub comes in, where you would charge someone a, a fee for having a recycled mattress.
Recycled.
And one that's disposable, so that's where they would be charged, uh, I believe we were charging ten dollars when we were on the grant program, and fifteen if it was disposable.
Okay, alright, so there was a motion, uh, which was seconded to raise the fee to twenty dollars for this year and starting July twenty twenty, with that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, go to twenty-five, um, and we got a second on that, so all in favor, aye?
And all second.
Aye.
Alright, uh, alright, so if you just make that note, uh, Derek, Derek will. Alright, uh, box springs, I would, would that be the same, out of the discussion?
Yeah, but there's no, there's no difference for us between mattress and box springs, so whatever you do for mattress, just do box springs.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was, okay, alright, um.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to include both.
Okay, um.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, we'll amend, uh, it to, uh, both bo- uh, mattresses and box springs, twenty dollars for this fiscal year, twenty-five for the next ten. Alright, um, the next item is, uh, televisions, which would go from, uh, thirty to forty inch television from twenty to twenty-five, any issue there? Uh, next one is, uh, television forty inch plus, going from twenty-five to thirty, any issue there? Alright, uh, next item is propane tanks going from five to ten. No issue moving on, uh, stoves, uh, white products basically, uh, from fifteen to twenty. Uh, automobile batteries from five to ten. Uh, half a truckload of debris from fifty to seventy-five. Full, uh, truckload of debris from seventy-five to a hundred.
What are we defining debris?
Not the, not the brush pile, the, the dumpster stuff, construction stuff, shingles, things like that.
No, the construction stuff.
Or any trash, basically.
Yeah, not household trash, but anything that you would normally.
Let you take your debris to the house and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
If you clean out a basement, that type of trash, no food trash.
Um, the next item that's gonna be, would be changed, would be, uh, brush pile, uh, ten dollars for half a truck, is that what we're looking at, and twenty-four a full?
On, on that one, I, I don't have a problem with the ten twenty, but, uh, Vicky and I were discussing like, you know, when you have the person that comes with a, a bag, you know, one of those brown paper bags with clippings, I'm not gonna charge him ten dollars, so I was almost thinking like, uh, a five, ten, twenty, something along those, something for, or even just get rid of it. You know, like the person that's showing up with a bag, I, I'm not gonna charge him ten dollars for that, so that's something that, you know, I'll, I'll talk to the board about, you know, where, where should we go for that person?
Um.
But yeah, the ten twenty for, you know, you, you come with your truck full of stuff, ten, you come with a trailer tat- attached in the back, up to the top, twenty.
Vicky, is, is some way that you feel you could estimate less than, say, a half a truck?
Oh, yeah.
Um, there's a.
Like a trailer, like they come in with the dump bodies and when those are full with brush, I would definitely say twenty dollars.
Uh-huh.
Like, um, small S ten bed is smaller than a Chevy fifteen hundred.
Right.
So obviously, you wouldn't be doing, you could, that could turn to like, they would think they were ten, they could really be a twenty. And like senior citizens, my Thursday, Friday crowd, they come in, they have like barrels that are half full, because they can't empty them if they're full, so they come half, so to charge them ten, you know, I would figure a five.
Yeah, um, of course, you know, it becomes your call and so forth.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, if somebody came in with like five Home Depot trucks.
Yeah, the bags.
Bags, and what would you charge them?
Honestly, depending on how, if they have them just lightly stacked, I would probably say five bucks. If they had them like really, where they were like really heaving them, you'd be looking at probably ten.
Yeah, alright, um, alright, my, I kinda would say, leave it to s- the small stuff under, under a truckload to the operator's discretion, do you think that, that would be reasonable?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, this might.
Doesn't make sense, a showy bag, full of stuff, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, I'm not gonna charge them ten, but.
Right, alright, so, um, so you made that motion for me, just to have a, that it could, uh, be discretion.
So we're talking for brush, so.
Right, br- brush or leave, something like that.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to, um, do the ten twenty and leave the discretion up to the, um, operator, um, to go forward with brush.
Second, ma'am.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Okay, and the last item there is, uh, water heater at ten, any discussion there? Alright, uh, I'll accept a motion on the landfill fees.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have, um, two questions on, on this for that, when, when do those take effect? When do the price changes take effect?
As soon as you, I would say as soon as you administratively feel it can be done.
Okay, so I can hold the stickers, the sticker part off until we start issuing the new stickers, okay?
Next year, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd also recommend though putting it online, that as of a certain date, that the price of, um, of a sticker, well, I would just go with the sticker at that point, because they're gonna, they're gonna fi- when you go,
That's gonna be changed.
maybe when they go to the transfer station, you can hand, give them a handout of what the new prices are gonna be, um, or have it posted somewhere, but I definitely would recommend, 'cause you don't want people showing up and stop yelling at you,
And oh, by the way, the prices changed.
'Cause we went up double and blah, 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 so I would recommend that we say as a state dirt, as a date certain will go up, and then it'll give you time to, for one of the new ones, but I would put out there right away, that as of, that's my recommendation, it's up to the board, let's say as of August first, this, these are the new fees.
Well, the stickers are January to January.
January to December.
Right.
So why don't we hold off on the January, on the stickers, pardon me, until January one?
Finish shop this year.
Yep. And then the pri- the prices, I was kinda thinking along those lines, I was thinking like maybe a September first thing,
Right.
we can get it online, we can get flyers out, and then September first change them, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just let them know.
Do we, um, incur a cost to dispose of the automotive batteries, uh, usually charging five dollars a piece for automotive batteries, and is it ten dollars a piece for truck batteries?
No, they're both, they're all one price.
They're all, one price, do we incur a cost to, to dispose of those, or is, do we generate revenue selling those?
I, I've never actually broken it down to, to that specific, I could, I, I've.
What happens to the batteries, how do they handle?
They, they're, um, picked up by an estate.
Okay, so.
And then, if there's any type of a refund or revenue, it goes straight to the board house.
Okay, so, so it's used to offset the cost of operations, because they're paying about thirty cents a pound, but, okay,
Yeah.
Goes into general fund.
I just wanted to understand that, thank you.
Alright, we'll go. Alright, we'll go on to the uh Board of Health fees on page two. Alright, uh again, uh if there's no one has any issue with the items that are not being changed, I'll just do the ones that are being changed. Alright, um septic plan review new, going from fifty to a hundred. Septic plan review uh repair, going from fifty to a hundred. Uh septic uh permit repair from one twenty-five to two hundred. Uh per test, uh it was three hundred dash two twenty-five, it's gonna go from to three hundred two fifty.
It's three hundred for a a new, a new build and two fifty for a repair.
Okay.
That's what the slash is.
Okay. Um, the next is going to be uh milk and cream from ten dollars to zero dollars.
What's that mean, milk and cream?
It's an antiquated permit that used to have to get issued, um the milk and cream permit's non-existent.
Does that go to farmers or stores?
No, it went to stores, went to uh any place that sold milk or cream.
But it doesn't exist anymore.
So. It does, yeah, it's an antiquated permit, so if you, on the next one, the food establishment from one fifty to one seventy-five, I kinda tied that fee into that.
Well, do you inspect these establishment once a year, is that it?
Uh, supposed to be twice.
Okay, uh so food establishment from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five. Bakery from bakery from fifty to seventy-five. Uh mobile food slash catering uh from seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five. Uh residential uh kitchen from zero to a hundred and twenty-five. Um Derek, if I may ask, why did you come up to a hundred and twenty-five with, I'm I'm just looking at the other towns, I'm just.
Uh, well, I just took an average of it, um so if I added them all divided by four, I was probably close to that one twenty-five. That was just the number, um. We just don't have a residential kitchen permit and that's something that we do need.
What is that exactly?
It's when you're trying to actually have a licensed kitchen out of your home. Like it's literally residential kitchen, like you're not gonna have people sitting down, eating at your table, but what a lot of people do is like if they're gonna try to. Get into a farmer's market, like if they make uh cookies, jams, jellies, a lot of residential kitchens, trying to do that. It it's not an easy process to have a residential kitchen, so.
Okay, now how how many of these do you see a year?
Right now, we don't have any, that ain't all of them. Right now, we don't have any.
Okay, uh farmer's markets from zero to twenty-five. Uh tobacco annual um permit from twenty-five to seventy-five. Uh tattoo practitioner from fifty to a hundred. Tattoo apprentice from zero to fifty.
Johnny, can you hold on for a sec? Can we go back to that farmer's market for a minute, cause I just thought of something.
Sure. Okay, fine. Okay.
The Grange over in East Freetown has several farmer's markets throughout the course of the summer, maybe once every other month.
Uh-huh.
So would you charge them twenty-five dollars for the the whole summer or every time they have a farmer's market?
If the, like the farmer's market that you're talking about, she gave me a bunch of dates, I would probably put that on one permit for twenty-five dollars.
Yeah. Do one more. Okay.
Do you go inspect, they do at all or?
I'll pop in, I don't have to inspect a farmer's market because technically there's not supposed to be anything there for me to inspect. So I'll give them a permit just to say, okay, you you've showed me what you have, and I'll pop in just to make sure that somebody isn't there, but to the actual do an inspection, I'm not supposed to.
So they're selling cookies at a farmer's market, they should have a residential kitchen permit, correct?
They shouldn't be selling cookies at a farmer's market. That's already a problem if they are.
Right.
Okay.
So no matter how many booths, fifty farmers there, different booths, it's one permit for the full time.
Right, because the whole premise behind it is you're selling whole fruits and vegetables, you're, you've picked it from your land and you're selling it at the market. I don't have jurisdiction over whole fruits and vegetables, so by the definition of what a farmer's market is supposed to be, I'm not supposed to be there. This has always been the Board of Health's problem with farmer's markets. Because they always end up turning into something that they're not intended to be. So far with the Grange, it's been great. Everything that they've been doing is exactly what they've said they've been doing, I popped in on them, haven't had any surprises. Other places I've worked, it wasn't always that case, so farmer's markets are great for what they are if they're done properly.
So if they sell jellies, which I've seen, how do you look at that?
Not supposed to. The only things that are exempt, that you could technically sell at a farmer's market, whole fruits and vegetables, honey, maple syrup. That's it. Those are, those are the exempt items.
As you say, why is it, because I've seen plenty of times where all kinds of things are sold, especially food. Now, maybe not in this state, but I've seen it, yeah.
And farmer's market, people are smart with farmer's markets, they can, they'll try to word things in a certain way that it makes it sound like they do belong there when they. And at one point, not this one, we had food trucks, like, well, I wanna be part of the farmer's market. You're a food truck, like there's there's nothing farmer's market about you. Like it it was getting to that point, like the the line was so blurred.
Alright, moving on, annual pool permit, uh from seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Tanning facilities from seventy-five to a hundred dollars. Um, piggery from a hundred and twenty-five dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars. And that is, yeah.
And there was one I forgot to put on here, the boat ramp.
Okay, um. I would prefer.
Among uh among other issues at the boat ramp.
I would I would prefer that you don't because it's not gonna gen-.
Okay.
Uh, I think maybe that's a.
Another topic for another day.
Another topic for another day, alright, um I'll accept a motion to approve the uh fee schedule for the Board of Health.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Alright, thank you Derek, thank you Jeff, thank you for your uh work on this, uh guys. Okay, the, we've been asked to put the mail, the discussion of mailings to town residents uh down a little bit. Would that be camp, true camp or or would you be uh available, well, why don't we, why don't we move it down to uh to with uh twelve with the reserve fund?
Alright, we tell the compliance committee, we don't have a forum, we're supposed to meet at six.
Okay, alright, so I will move that down to the agenda, okay, no problem. Uh, remote participation. Uh, I had this put in the agenda, uh there is the ability, I don't know if you both had a chance to read. Um, there is the ability to have remote participation in meetings uh under. Called Massachusetts general laws and regulations set up by the Attorney General's office in relation to the meeting law. Um, and what has to be done is it has to be approved by the administrative uh board or office. Um, and then other boards could meet. And I wanted to put it out there for discussion, is this something that either one of you have a an issue with? Or should we look into maybe setting up some um ability for people to have? A a person come in a remote situation, if need be, we'd have to have some regulations. Um, you, it's not, it doesn't replace a a quorum, but say if you had someone who um was. Or um would say debilitated for some reason, uh couldn't come to the meeting for a time, you could have them remotely be involved. Um, I don't know if either one of you think it's a good idea or not a good idea, I just wanted to have a little bit of discussion.
From my perspective, I think this would be a good thing. You know, if one of us uh wasn't able to come in for whatever reason and you could attend the uh electronics somehow.
Uh-huh.
That might be good, that way you could still participate and listen to what's going on.
Uh-huh.
Are we talking about like if we're all on vacation at the same?
No, no, no.
Can't do that, you have to have a quorum.
So that's, okay.
You have to have a quorum.
So, I mean, yeah, if one of us are in the hospital or anything, I'll just love you guys, but the last thing I wanna do is be on a remote with you.
Right, or.
Face timing you from.
In the hospital at a select moment, just meaning that's not gonna happen, I can promise you that, but I mean, I I'm cer- I'm certain that there are certain situations.
But but. Yeah.
I think my only, um I I think the people of the towns, you know, the townspeople voted us in to ensure that we would be able to be present at the meetings and. You know, participate with public discussion or whatever, so I I just hope that we don't get away from that, but I certainly think that there might be one or two instances where it might be warranted.
Yeah.
And the frequently asked questions about remote participation that was pulled down from the mass.gov. Uh, they uh they make mention of the fact that you can adopt a policy stating that you can only use a remote. Uh access a certain number, the board can establish certain ground rules. You can say, alright, you can only use it three or four times a year, so it doesn't become the situation where somebody's living in Florida. And, you know, say they have six months of the year and still participating in the meetings here, uh for childcare purposes, if the, you know, somebody has a child and. For some reason they can't get a babysitter for that evening, uh you'd allow the use for that kind of thing. And the Board of Selectment actually is the uh authority under the law to uh create uh or allow remote participation. And also it applies to all boards and committees that are uh appointed or elected uh within the town of Freetown.
Well, the thing, the thing that I see is that since you're still required to have a quorum.
Yes.
Uh, there really is not an awful lot that, you know, that makes this uh. You know, as as a big deal one way or the other, it just allows a one person, let's say, on this board to not be present. But you you can, you could still vote, right?
Yes, you're voted, you're allowed to go into executive session, uh and participate as a member of the board remotely, and the only requirement is that.
Right, yes.
So. Yeah. Well, you know.
There'd be an audible transmission, however, if you have uh audio, video for FaceTime or Skype, you could also use that.
And I don't see any downside, I mean, Lisa doesn't wanna come in via FaceTime or whatever, she won't, if I wanted to, I could. Not, you know, is there any downside to any of this, Lisa, that you stay?
I I I guess, I'm not saying yes or no, we we don't know until we we instill this policy and it, and we also. If it becomes abusive, and I know we said that, you know, we could limit the amount of times, but I think that we monitor our board, but. Who moni- you know, who's gonna monitor the other boards if it becomes ab- and I don't think anybody would, I I think that we all try to get here and we do try to rearrange our schedules according. To whatever vacations we're on, um so, I mean, I I it's worthy of trying it for a year, I guess.
Okay, well.
Um, and it, I I think that you as the chair should sit down with even and come up with some, maybe some ground rules.
Right, that that would, that's my, my thing is, is do we want to. Look into this, get a regulation, cause the 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 regulation, the the policies and regulations would, would uh, like.
Yeah, why not?
Like the policy.
Say, and not to pick on the finance committee, just, but you're here, you're a bigger board, and the the fact of the matter is, you could be times when, okay. Um, we've gotta, we have a quorum, but somebody wants to participate there, uh for whatever reason, not not able to, they could participate. We could put a time limit, I think that's one of the thing, a a usage limit on it, but uh that, that's my idea.
Yeah, so I think that I'll I'll make a motion that the chair sit down with the um admin- town administrator, come up with some general policies and guidelines to put back to the board for a future discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, item number nine is uh the minutes for the July one uh meeting of the Board of Selectment. Anyone have any issue with the um the minutes that is printed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the July one meeting of the Board of Selectment, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um number ten is police station project update.
Unfortunately, due to um my stepfather's passing, I was not able to attend the meeting, so I'll turn it over to David.
Uh, we went, we uh have been continuing to work on uh an issue with DEP regarding the swale outside of the uh property. Um, it's uh being addressed, was addressed today in terms of marking and identifying the swale. Um, it's part of a a DEP requirement, um it's hopefully gonna be resolved this week, which is a good thing. Uh, the structural steel is onsite and is now, I guess I heard today from Charlie, uh that we actually are starting to put a skeleton of a building up. And uh that's pretty exciting, so basically those are the two things that.
At some point, um we will be having a a beam signing for um everybody that's involved, not only in the police station, but um try to set up something for town residents to come by. And also um sign the beam before we put it, one of those into the building, so that's something that we need to um take care of rather soon.
Okay, yeah, we can do it before we get it up, I don't wanna get up.
Yeah.
Alrighty, uh town administrators report.
I only have two items, uh one is the thing that I mentioned at the last meeting about South Main Street Bridge, the work has been completed and finalized. Uh, I'm continuing to work on a couple issues on that, I've spoken to Shane Souzer at the Region District Five Office. Regarding the weight limit, um they're gonna conduct an inspection on October of the bridge. Uh, he did talk to Tom Rabello, who was a state bridge engineer, and they took a look at the previous report and it, at the last, at the last time it was inspected. It had been lowered by one level due to the grouting issues. Uh, the feeling is uh from Shane is that Tom will not uh change uh the posting of the weight on the bridge. Um, uh because uh of the work that we're currently doing, they're they're gonna say the bridge is, the the bridge right now is a four, should be, it's gonna be raised back to a five. Uh because of that work. Um, I also uh talked to Shane about uh, there there's a procedure in the law, uh chapter eighty-five, section two. Which allows uh the town to um set road restrictions on truck traffic, it doesn't have anything to do with the bridge per se. However, once again upon talking to uh an upper level manager at uh at the state level of DOT. Uh because it's on seventy-nine, it's a state road, uh we can't do that, so, and if if we did decide to do that. Regardless of of what the DOT says, the town could incur liability because you'd then be pushing any traffic off of that road onto other roads. And uh should something bad happen uh as a result of that, uh the town would be fully on the hook in terms of the liability associated with that. Um, I ta- also talked to uh the state about the tip, uh that's all done on a state level. Uh, we originally were led to believe that it's a ten-year program, it's really a five-year program. Um, the tip is hard to get on to, um and he's didn't offer a lot of encouragement on that part of it. However, there's another section uh that uh, there's two ways to get on the tip. One is through an existing roadway project that can be addressed through uh SERPAD. So I'm gonna be talking to uh Jeff Walker, who's the director of SERPAD in terms of trying to get placement on that uh list. Uh, so that uh we can at least get on the tip for a new bridge at some point. Uh, today on the Freetown screw, I found out that we didn't get the technical assistance grant uh for forty-five thousand dollars that we had applied for. Uh, one of the things that the technical assistance grant was gonna do is gonna help us. Uh, one of the things that the technical assistance grant was gonna do is gonna help us, uh, to, uh, uh, with the RFP to market the property. Um, and, uh, help us through the process of, of basically, uh, getting a developer to, to re, uh, uh, or to develop, uh, the property into senior housing and into commercial, uh, commercial property. Uh, that was kind of disappointing, uh, however, we're gonna move forward, I originally had scheduled a meeting with Acushnet for this month, uh, because we do need both parcels of land, uh, in order to, uh, make the project economically viable. Um, I put that meeting off because I thought we were gonna get the technical assistance grant, uh, so we're probably gonna be meeting in August with the two boards. Once again, I wanna, uh, talk to Tracy Costa, who was the, uh, environmental engineer that handled our portion of the cleanup, you know, with the demolition of the building as well as the removal of the contaminants and the amount of four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we do still have an obligation, uh, to market that property to recoup that four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, my concern is, uh, the, the property and Acushnet potentially having some hazardous materials on it, and whether that could be incorporated into the RFP as the developer assuming the responsibility, I don't know if I, you know, if somebody would be willing to do that. Assume the responsibility of the cleanup as part of getting the, the land at a good price. Um, so, we have, still have a couple options, if, if it's a big cleanup project, we're gonna have to go for a brownfields grant, grant. The question then becomes, do we accept the Acushnet parcel before it's cleaned up, or do we accept it with the understanding that we're gonna, I, I don't know how significant the cleanup is going to be, so as a result, until we actually know that unknown variable, um, the, the project is kind of in flux. And, uh, I, I have a little bit of a concern about accepting it only from the perspective that, um, we don't wanna increase the liability to the town by accepting a parcel that potentially is, is contaminated, so. Which throws a real wrench into the, the works, because, you know, we do have an obligation, at least to market and sell the parcel that is in, uh, in Free Town. So, when I get those questions answered, I'll set up the meeting with Acushnet and then we can all sit down and talk, it'll be a joint meeting of the two boards.
Okay.
All right, um. We can, to the finance committee, on the reserve fund transfer request, uh, for the transfer station, is that something you want to discuss now, or do you want to wait, uh?
I think we have to wait until we get a read.
We, we can vote on that.
Right, right.
Then like.
Right, I, I was wondering if you wanted us to vote on it and, or if you had any input before we voted on it or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with you going ahead with it.
Okay. All right, just to keep moving along here. All right, uh, item number twelve is the, uh, request for transfer of seven thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, for the transfer station, um, for FY nineteen bills, um, for cost increases.
For what?
The cost increases on, um, actually, the different.
Pretty much.
Uh, trash removal and.
Seven thousand eight hundred.
So forth, right?
Yeah, there's, the, the costs keep going up and I just didn't have enough money in the budget for it, so, something I need to work on, I need to find ways of saving money where I can, but unfortunately I'm here asking for this now, part of it is it's going up on prices, but there's other things I gotta do better, I'm trying to just manage it a little bit better.
Like what? Okay, can you give us?
Find cost-saving ideas, apply for as many grants as I can and try to help with mattresses, things like that. Um, you know, me and Vicki have talked, what different cost-saving ideas can we come up with, you know, let's shop things around, where we can shop things around, just, an- anything, anything. Unfortunately, the car, recycling is extremely important, but it has gotten to the point that it is so expensive that people are just gonna stop recycling. And, 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 it's not a Free Town problem, it's not a Massachusetts problem, it is worldwide.
Well, well.
It's, it's, it's getting bad, but I can't worry, I can only worry about my little piece and I gotta try to do better with it.
I'll make a motion to forward it over to the finance committee.
So, that's a motion approved, do you transfer?
Well, yes, we, we, we forward then to the finance committee, actually.
We are just.
But, do we approve it also?
No.
Well, no, we don't approve it, just.
This is a tr- a transfer, not a, a departmental.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's.
Okay, all right, second.
Uh, motion made and seconded to, uh, oh, uh, transfer to the, uh, oh, uh, finance committee, the transfer station, uh, request, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, I'll turn it over to the, uh, personnel.
Are we doing it up, so we're not doing the mailings?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna s- wait until, um, they're supposed to have a meeting at six, correct?
Okay.
A meeting that's six.
Okay.
Right now, we're still one person short.
No, no worries.
All right.
All right, um, we have the, uh, advice from the Attorney General's Office, the board has the following options for the preliminary screening committee, I'll turn that part over to David.
Uh, basically, uh, we have the two potential ways, uh, to, uh, address the situation regarding, um, the process of interviewing people, one is to, uh, go through the process of having a member of the Board of Selectmen, serve on, uh, a screening committee, uh, with additional staff chosen by the Personnel, uh, Chair, uh, convening an executive session for interviews, uh, determining two finalists forward to the Board of Selectmen. And the Personnel Board Chair reports back to the Board of Selectmen at the next meeting, and then the Board of Selectmen, uh, interview, uh, those two finalists. And if there's only one finalist, uh, the committee's required to establish, uh, uh, why there is only one finalist. Um, the second would be for me and, and additional staff members, which I would anticipate being the department head, uh, to, uh, review the application, do the interviews and deliberate, uh, and it, and it's not a posted meeting, it would just be a regular, you know, interview process, it wouldn't require posting, whereas, uh, the executive session, obviously, in the meeting of the Board of Selectmen would require, uh, posting a meeting, and then having me make recommendation, uh, of a, of a finalist to the Board of Selectmen. And in that case, um, a, uh, member of the Board of Selectmen, uh, cannot be part of the preliminary screening committee.
And do you have a recommendation to the board?
I would, the, the second, uh, option for me would be easier, obviously, because it would take, um, you know, uh, save time for the, the board member and the process of going through a screening committee and posting meetings and, um, and, and following that process where it would be more, we'd be able to adapt quicker by having me and, and a department head and our HR person sit down as the people to do the interviews. Uh, we'd be able to turn it around quicker, um, because we don't have to post the meetings and for me to make a recommendation. However, I'm cognizant of the fact that certain positions may, uh, um, you know, for certain board members may be of more of an importance, uh, to the Personnel Board Chair and to the individual members, um, because of the nature of the work that they're doing and the type of skill set that's involved. And in that situation, potentially using that option, uh, as, uh, an alternative, so.
Well, personally, uh, the reason we brought this up was, I think your first option is much more efficient. Uh, the, the major problem we've had with this is that, uh, the whole board didn't meet to interview, it was always just the Chair of the Personnel Board. And, uh, I think that's somewhat problematic, just one person from our board doing that, and every year, that person changes. So, as far as I can see.
That has been the pro- just in fairness to the, the Chair, Personnel Chair, that has been the process that we've used in the past.
Been the process, but it, it's also somewhat problematic, and I think if we had a group like, that you would had, would be much more efficient.
Yeah, I bring the people in, I bring the department head, who's gonna be working directly with that person, I bring the HR person in who, uh, basically had written the job description and, and had done the work, the, in terms of setting up the interviews and doing all of the, the questions and things like that, uh, it's also part of the process.
And then your recommendations?
Will come to the board, the board will, could then say, we accept your recommendation, or we'd like to interview those people and take it a step further.
Right.
That's still an option.
I wouldn't be a different person every year, doing the interview, which really doesn't make too much sense to me.
I'd, I'd just like to, for everyone's, uh, information, I'll, I'll take note, I'll like to read from the town administrators' section of the bylaw. It's Article Three, uh, Article Three and three point, uh, three E through, uh, but I'm, uh, go to G, which is powers to appoint. The town administrator shall recommend candidates to the Board of Selectmen for the appointment of the following offices, veterans, agent, animal inspector, sealer of weights and measures, and members and employees of the police department, that's, uh, paragraph one. Two is officers appointed under this bylaw shall perform their duties in accordance with the, that, uh, with the general laws and town bylaws. Uh, paragraph three, the town administrator shall have the power to appoint on merit and fitness alone, the inspector of wires and such other individual town officers, employees and members of the boards and commissions, for whom appointment is not otherwise provided by the Massachusetts general laws or by town bylaw. Um, the town administrator shall have the power to remove any official or employee appointed by the town administrator for cause after notice and at the request of the employees or official adhering. And the final, uh, paragraph is the town administrator shall supervise the boards, uh, committees, commissions and employees that the administrator appoints and at the request of the Board of Selectmen, those appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So with that and the fact that the town, uh, pardon me, the Attorney General's Office has reckon, well, has given two scenarios. One, which would require, uh, o- open meetings and a process in which, uh, potential candidates came before an open meeting and could be, um, in my opinion, have their present job be put in jeopardy. I feel that the, um, mechanism, which is basically laid out in the bylaw, and, uh, is that the town administrator carry out all interviews and then makes a recommendation, um, so, as, with that, I would make a motion that basically we follow the, the, um, guidelines put forward by the town bylaw, um, and that the town administrator, uh, performs the interview process, uh, and makes recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for other than those, uh, positions which are, uh, explicitly, uh, stated in the first.
You made the motion.
I make the motion, yes.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
Um, no, that's, I, that's, uh, will be my discussion, no.
No, I know, you, there was a motion.
Yes.
And a second.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Well, seeing, uh, so there is just.
All right, you're the Chair.
No, I didn't know if you had any further discussion.
Yes, yes, oh, no, 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 that's it.
So, um, I think that the way things were going was the way they should be and are intended to be, because with a panel, there is no, it's, yeah, I'll quote somebody, um, on this table that said it's political suicide for me to be able to do this by myself. So, I also think that, um, a panel, like we did when we hired the town administrator, Derek, the building inspector, there was a panel and it, it brought in everybody into the fold, so, um, I'm not gonna get into an argument with anybody, I'm gonna just state that that explicitly be posted on the record. Also, I wanna clarify that should the Personnel Board, um, Chairman, in concert with the town administrator, um, that's the way it's always been also, um, conducted the interviews with anybody that they both felt should be on the panel, um, and then that was also brought over to the Board of Selectmen. And, um, just to reiterate that this is done in executive session, not in open session, so, um, that being said, I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I am opposed. Okay, so next we have appointments, Michael Dejanese, um, Douglas Munjen and Adam Sal- Salinaro as police auxiliary officers, effective July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Kobe Ember as single, um, signal operator trainee, um, effective July fifteen, twenty nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And Thomas, uh, Jessica Thomas to health insurance advisory.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done.
All right, to go to the last item on the agenda is the, uh, discussion on, uh, mailings to town residents.
And I'll call the finance committee leading the order at six thirty.
Okay, now, why don't we come back down here? So, yes, yeah.
All right, uh, the reason, uh, I've asked this to be put on the agenda is, uh, this is something I've felt for a long time, but the Free Town taxpayers should know what is going on, and, uh, this really came to a head at our last annual town meeting. Uh, with a town meeting where only somewhere around twenty-five Free Town residents were at the meeting, and the rest of the people, another twenty-five or thirty, uh, were either town employees or town officials, uh, but not, uh, just Free Town taxpayers. And, uh, I remember a few years ago when we had a, uh, newspaper in town, the, uh, I think it was the, uh, Sonnet Voice or something like that, does anybody remember? Uh, uh, no, what was it?
I think that sounds a little right, Village Voice?
Village Voice, that's what it was, the Village Voice, and the Village Voice used to print all the goings-on. And we used to get crowds, maybe up to five hundred or more people show up at the annual town meetings and at the special meetings. Always had a good representation of taxpayers, and that doesn't happen anymore. Uh, but we did see about a year ago that when flyers went out, the, uh, the halls were filled with taxpayers who came to vote. And, uh, I really feel that, uh, as a town, we do a terrible job, uh, letting people know what is going on. Uh, whenever I ask anybody, I was in Barbershop this morning, and I talked to a few people there and asked them if they knew about the annual town meeting, did they see any postings? The answer is always no, uh, we don't do a very good job putting signs up around town for our meetings. If you drive out of Free Town into Berkeley, uh, you see huge signs in Berkeley and Dayton, uh, that they have a town meeting, we don't do that here. We have, uh, we claim that we put, uh, a few postings around town, I think, uh, four or five maybe, but most people don't see them. So, my feeling that, uh, we should do a mailing for any, uh, important town meeting. Uh, the mailing should have in it what we're going to discuss, or what will be voted on, and, uh, we should have the selectmen's opinions or of, uh, what those articles might mean. We should also have an, another paragraph from the, uh, Finance Committee to, uh, voice their recommendations. And, uh, the goal being that our taxpayers understand what is going on, what they might wanna. what they might wanna come and vote on, instead of just being totally out of the picture. Uh, what we're doing now is totally inadequate. Um, most people don't get phone calls, and even if they do get those calls, there is no detail as to what's going to happen, just that there is a meeting. And uh, we don't know that if they even get those messages, if they've signed up for them. Um, and again, the postings that we do do, which are only, I think, with a four or five, people never see them. So, uh, that's why I'd like to see this put in place. Uh, and I'd like to, this board to do it in conjunction with the Finance Committee so that we can have everybody's opinion on there and uh, the people do get informed.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Um, Tim, did, were you able to get any figures?
I was. Uh, the town has approximately thirty-two hundred house, uh, head of households, so it'll be thirty-two hundred mailings that would have to go out, somewhere around there. Um, I used an online tool, uh, with the the post office website, USPS, uh, every door, direct mail. Uh, they estimate that each mailing would cost up around six hundred dollars. I would have to verify that with the post office, just to be sh- to be double, to be sure about that.
Mm-hmm.
And I also, it didn't exactly lay out what sort of mailing that is, if that's just a postcard, if it can be a whole packet, or what sort, what size mailing it would be.
It can be uh, a eight by twelve folded in half, I believe. And uh, you can put verbiage on both sides.
Right, yeah, I didn't look too close into that.
Yeah.
It was just cursory.
Yeah, so you have the printing cost, whatever that will be, and and the six hundred dollar mailing. Uh, we, we're spending now four thousand dollars for uh, the telephone system, which really doesn't get the information out to people. And uh, I mean, we we don't seem to have a problem spending millions of dollars for this, that and the other thing, that probably is necessary, but to spend, uh, what did you come up with a number for an annual expense?
I don't have a, I didn't do that, I didn't know how many mailings we would want.
Right, so let's say we have three mailings, fifteen hundred dollars apiece, that's forty-five hundred dollars. That's uh, about what we're spending now on uh, just a telephone system. Uh, so, I I think it would be money well spent.
All right, any other discussion? Um, do I hear a motion to, and what you might want to do, um, another thing, do we know right now if there's uh, money in the bu- is there?
Just uh, no money budgeted for that.
Okay.
There was the, there was some money in the Fin- uh, Finance Committee's budget for mailings,
Uh-huh.
but I, I think it was just fifteen hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, it was four thousand, I believe.
So, was it raised to four thousand?
I think that's what we had put in last year.
I don't have that information, I can't.
Yeah, um.
I don't have that information with me.
Yeah, well.
Uh, I'm, uh, I I'm just.
Yeah.
Cover the bases, um.
Who's gonna be in charge of the mailing?
Who?
Yeah, who's gonna be in charge, huh?
The two boards, the two boards.
No, 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 so, is this gonna be the Board of Selectmen's undertaking to to mail them all out? Or is it Tim and Ally, like, or is it the Secretary from the Finance Committee?
I'm not determined.
Like, cause who's, who's labor, labor, like, who's gonna be in charge of that?
I'd gladly volunteer if you want somebody, yeah.
Why don't you, I'm asking a question, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, that, we we haven't got to that point yet, uh. Excuse me?
Oh, we.
No, no, that that is all done by the printer.
Yeah, that's all done, so s- the stuffing and the, that part of it.
Yeah, all, yeah, what, what, really what has to be done is for people to sit down and draft a copy.
Yeah.
And then you give the copy to the printer and they take care of everything.
I I happen to know that the uh, Council on Aging does put out a newsletter every month. Uh, there might be some, maybe they can answer some of the uh, oh, questions as to what they do. I know it wouldn't be a big a mailing as proposed, but um, I see it as workable, I I I, personally, I see it as uh, something that is worth trying. Uh, we'll see what what happens, um, as we go along, see if it's successful and increasing or, you know, how it works out, uh, so, if there's a motion.
I imagine that for the annual town meeting with a lot of articles on it, it might be a pretty substantial mailing.
Well, yeah, I don't believe that we need to p- print the whole board.
Oh, no, no, of course not, no.
So.
No, but, you know, you have to make some decision as to which article is merit discussion in the newsletter.
Right, exactly, yeah.
All right, I'll I'll ask the Finance Committee, what what are your your feelings about it? You you wanted to uh, be involved?
I mean, we haven't discussed it recently as a board, but um, you know, I think, I think we're in general in favor of the idea.
All right, um.
I think we we may continue the discussion afterwards.
George, would it be uh, appropriate in your mind to let the Finance Committee discuss it a little bit among themselves? Uh, just to possibly work out bugs and so forth?
Sure.
And then uh, we can discuss it uh, further, uh, at a late date, we we've got some wiggle room here uh, in the plan, so, all right.
We could track down the cost, for example, in the newsletter, constantly, do you get cost on that?
Right, yeah, right, yeah. Good, I mean, thanks a lot, Tim, for doing that, you know, that work.
And we can clarify what that involves, the six hundred dollars and.
Um, all right, I don't see any other business for us.
Should we take a vote on this, or no?
Uh, well.
I'm just gonna put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, we'd be putting it on another, next agenda, we we just, you know, ask you to, the Finance Committee, give us some input
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss that.
and uh, we we can march on from there, uh, but we'll move forward.
You you mentioned the Council on Aging.
Uh-huh.
The clerks here compose everything.
Uh-huh.
They do have a machine, they print everything here.
Uh-huh.
And then it goes to the post office after the labels are on. And George is talking like a company to do all that, so.
Yeah, it might be cheaper to print in-house.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, that's where it becomes labor intensive, in terms of, either you, your secretary is gonna do it, or our staff is gonna do it, so that's when you really have to start thinking about how you're gonna, you know, manage that situation.
There's a major difference to, uh, the COA sends it to a mailing list that is only, I I don't know the number, but whatever it is, it is. This, on the other hand, to get the, I believe it's nine or twelve cents per page, post offices greatly reduces the rate if you just send it to resident.
Yeah.
And a lot of people will get this, that aren't registered voters, but that might entice them to go register, you never know.
All right.
Yep.
Uh, that being said, we'll work on that one.
Move to the back room for the rest of our meeting.
Alex, well, we're we're all set, yeah.
Uh, I have the executive session, I have one little item I need to talk to.
Okay.
Uh, on Excel.
Okay.
Didn't you have any more in the department transfers we didn't act on?
Well, there was ones from the previous, from the Thursday meeting.
Oh, okay, all right, that's something, we're good.
I just have to read the, I'll, I'll read the uh, all right, executive session.
And this one too.
Uh, just that one, all right.
Just this one?
Yep.
I did, I did forget on.
I just wanna talk about the bridge.
Okay, go ahead, Gary.
Uh, would you like me to sign?
I was always under the impression that a state road was uh, state was the responsibility for repairing. Were you paying to repair that bridge, or is it state?
We are paying for.
Here, here, yeah, okay, here's a quirk of the law.
I know, it's expensive.
Uh, is that you have state highways such as Route eighteen, that is controlled and owned by by the state. County road actually is a state highway because it used to be one forty. Route seventy-nine, Route one oh five, uh, those have, they're state designated roads.
And this is all yours?
They aren't, they aren't state roads, they just.
They should give that road to the state.
Yeah, yeah, well, we, what if we couldn't, we can't.
They probably look it up a little bit in terms of.
Yeah, we, what if we could, but we can't, all right, um.
Another question?
Okay, yes.
When you contemplate, uh, possibly informative mailings, if you can contemplate maybe if there's a special meeting which would not fall under the normal notification that there be a uh, financial threshold once that's met, whether it be a million dollars spent or two million dollars to be voted on, that that would trigger a mailing, that like, you know, that's, so if it's a thousand dollars to do a mailing and it's a million dollar expenditure, it's one tenth of one percent.
The only problem with that would be if you had like, uh, a special meeting about a zoning issue, but that people really get riled up about. And then you you'd want, you know, that would probably bring the people up together, all together anyway, but you you wouldn't meet that threshold to send notice of, so.
That's why.
Cause I've seen, you know, I, I, I've been in towns where we had a moratorium on housing, um, multifamily housing, and we had twelve hundred people there, you know, and that had nothing to do with a financial threshold.
Yeah, zoning is always a hot issue, so people shut up.
And to be perfectly honest with you, to, to, uh, is that we shouldn't, if we're, if we're gonna do it for a town, quote-unquote, town meeting, whether it's special or uh, annual, uh, we really shouldn't make the judge of what's important, what's not, because now you, you know, what if.
Well, you could also limit the amount of meetings created too.
Well, well, yeah, I, I, well, generally we do, generally we do.
Generally, just try to, if you have an annual and you have the falls, right.
Mm-hmm.
And then, plenty comes out.
Which we're trying to make all, all zoning issues, um, fall, in all money issues at the annual.
And fall, yeah.
Because then that way, you know how it is, towards the end of the meeting, no one wants to hear about zoning cause they're all tuned out, and those are the meeting, those are the times that you really have to ask questions about it. So, that's why we're trying to get, um, zoning fall and spending money annual. And once you have your budget, you should, there's no reason to go buy back for more money, cause you already have your budget, you should live within those means.
Yeah, usually it's house cleaning issues, that there's money involved, that there's things that weren't presented at the annual, or there was some kind of a shortfall or that kind of thing, they're generally not funding articles.
All right, um, if we'll, let it all continue on with the execu- executive session, but uh, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Paragraph A, Subparagraph three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if any, if an open meeting may have det- detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. The Chair so declares Excel uh, Recycling LLC versus Town of Freetown. Uh, and with that, I will um, leave the meeting. And go, we we won't, we will not be returning to uh.
It's gonna, you're gonna. You're gonna, yeah, roll call, Tim.
Okay, yes, we uh, will not be re-entering um, in public session. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Granwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes?